We have two public hearings. Does somebody get seated to captain?
Peggy's in the room.
I would imagine it. Or Stephen? Okay. Peggy, this. We have two public hearings. One's for the Deutsche Ego USA Corporation 360 Amity Road. Application for a modification of the special permit issued to the Jewish Community Center regarding the intention to construct a solar power canopy structure on the parking JCC parking lots. Which was published in the paper. But we submitted on July 28th. Let's accept that. So, is there someone here from the...
Thank you for your attention. To see a rendering, I could pass these out. Just of what the structure might look like. Just one addition that we wanted to share with you on a different, slightly different possible layout, which I'll address briefly. The same scope as the whole project.
Can you just say your name for the record?
Sure.
Thank you.
No problem. My name is Paul Keen and along with Daniel Prokopie, who's handing things out, we are the managing directors of Deutsche Ego USA. It's a subsidiary of Deutsche Ego AG of Germany. The company has been around since 1998. We've installed about 250 megawatts of projects around Europe and the US. Majority of that in Europe. From households up to our largest project, which is, Daniel was one of the project leaders on, it was a 200, I'm sorry, a 52-megawatt ground-mounted system. That's about 225 football fields in size. So, wide range of scope, commercial projects, everything in between. About 100 employees in all sorts of different areas, from acquisition to engineering to project operations and maintenance.
Let me just write this down. Daniel, did you want to add anything?
No. Your S subsidiary is based in Hoboken. As Paul mentioned, we are running the company here since 2010. Here, we have some projects in the United States meanwhile, and we're happy to have the opportunity to work together with the JCC and we're happy to answer every question you might have.
Okay. So, all of this information is here, so I'll be repeating some of the information here. But essentially, what we're proposing is a car canopy structure. And we are proposing that essentially on three of the parking lots at the JCC. So basically, off of Amity Road, once you come up the driveway here, we're looking at this parking lot, this parking lot, and this parking lot. So, what I also proposed was an alternate, just as a slight aside, that we may consider co-locating everything on this parking lot, basically depending on the results of the geotechnical engineering that we do. We expect to encounter some rock when we do the foundation work, but it's just something that I wanted to bring to your attention because there are only really two possibilities where to locate them. This possibility here, and then all on this parking lot here.
For the hearing marker, can you kind of describe, because if someone's listening to the tape, it doesn't mean anything.
Oh, sure. So basically, there is a southernmost parking lot, what I'll call the center parking lot, and then this parking lot, which is all the way west, which is the largest parking lot of the three. That largest parking lot has access to the camp at the southern end of the parcel.
Yeah, so I think the one on the left side of the building on the top part, you can refer to as the school parking lot.
Okay.
And then the other parking lot, I would refer to as the camp parking lot. And then the center one, I would refer to as the main parking lot.
So this being the school one?
No, that would be the main one.
This is the main, this is the center?
School, that's the school one.
School one being all the way west? Or the camp?
No, the camp is forward.
So camp is this one here?
Yes.
Of course. The camp is this one?
No.
How about one, two, and three?
Good point.
Okay. One, all the way west, three, all the way east. I'll refer to center as center. Okay. So, this project is basically being undertaken by Deutsche Ego. Clearly, the JCC will serve as host for the solar array, and the funding will come from CEPIA, it's the Clean Energy Finance and Investment Authority, which if you're not already aware, is a joint venture between the state of Connecticut and private banks such as Webster's Bank, People's Bank, and various other banks that can take the tax benefits that are associated with solar projects. Essentially, what we're proposing is that, oh, I'm sorry. One other partner I'd like to highlight is that the canopy manufacturer is a company called Solair Generation. There's also a page in here, they've worked with a lot of major companies throughout the United States, including GE, not too far from here, where you can see some of their carport structures, but also Staples, Chevrolet, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Munich Re, Rutgers University. They're one of the premier carport providers in the United States. So, essentially, what we are proposing is to use the JCC's parking lots, one, two, and three, in order to be able to accommodate 750 kilowatts of solar generation. That produces about 800, almost 900,000 kilowatt-hours of solar generation per year, and that will be used substantially by the JCC. In reality, it will also reinforce the United Illuminating Grid because, you know, in real-time, the electrons will go out to the grid and then they'll be used back at the JCC, so it'll be used by neighboring folks. There are a number of photographs in your packet, and also I passed out a number of sketches, so people can see what the carport structure actually looked like, from both a cutaway section, but also subtle renderings of what that would look like. I'll just keep the main pieces short here. It's essentially be about 15 feet high, which I understand to be within 35-foot current regulation of the municipality. It'll be about 450 feet from the nearest dwelling, which is within the 15 feet again that are required to be distant from there, and it also falls under the 3% rule, which is required for any accessory structure, or all accessory structures on this particular parcel. The total timeline that we're looking at for construction is roughly 16 weeks. That's including all the geotechnical engineering, all the foundation work that we have to do, the erection of the steel structures, mounting of the panels, and all electrical work to connect the system to the power grid. I've included here basically a summary of the various workers on site. Some will be there concurrently, some of them will be there, you know, basically not concurrently. I've also included a short summary of, after discussions with our subcontractors, of some of the various traffic impacts that there will be to the site, as well as noise impacts during the construction period. But I figured I'd probably best be left to ask, really that open to questions from the board, in terms of what areas you're most concerned about that we can speak to.
All right. Questions? So, I know I'm, I don't know if I'm going to clarify this, but, so you show A1, A2, A3?
Yes.
You were only planning on doing one of those?
No, no. This is, so, scenario one is where we place a system on all three parking lots. And this was, just because we had some discussions with the carport manufacturer and the geotechnical engineers based on some initial data back about the subsurface, the rock subsurface, there, we were contemplating, and I just wanted to make you aware, that scenario two, and there are only two scenarios here, would be that there, where we co-locate everything on what I'm calling parking lot one, which is the westmost parking lot.
And who's going to own this?
So that will be owned by the CEPIA, which is the abbreviation for the Clean Energy Finance and Investment Authority, which is the state entity.
The whole project will be owned by there?
Yeah.
For how long?
20 years.
And who maintains it?
They maintain it through the entire period. It's, they basically have it wrapped by several insurance products, both by Assurant, which is a major national insurance company, but also they have subcontracted operations and maintenance for their whole portfolio, because CEPIA is doing across, this basically this form of financing across the whole state of Connecticut. And so they have one master O&amp;M company. Deutsche Ego will actually be doing the work of that O&amp;M for this particular site to maintain our relationship with the JCC.
And so after 20 years, it becomes the JCC's?
It may become the JCC's. It is planned and basically already pre-financed that the whole array will be taken down unless there's another agreement reached. It would be advantageous in my mind, as an advocate of solar, that this would remain up, but because the steel structures could last, you know, 40, 50, 60 years. But the financing period is 20 years, so that will have to be addressed. If it's not automatically taken down, then the JCC will have to determine what they'd like to do at that point.
Is this going to be visible from adjacent properties?
You shouldn't be able to see it, basically from my understanding, when I've been on the site, you're not able to see, it won't be higher than the tree line, it's only 15 feet high. So it's significant in the sense that you can still drive vehicles underneath, including various service delivery or buses or something like that, but, I mean, I haven't been able to see other properties from the parking lots.
Will the underside be lighted?
Yes.
And are those on timers, or those going to be, how does that lighting work?
I would have to address and follow up that question for you, but if it's not timers, then it should be centrally controlled from by the JCC. But I would imagine timers, most parking lots that I've looked at in the past have been on timers of one type or another.
It would have a wattage, a minimum, or a maximum wattage?
Yeah. So the, Connecticut also has another program called the ZRECC program, or the Zero Emissions Renewable Energy Credit Program. This project has been awarded to ZRECC, which is, basically allows the financing to happen. And that allows a maximum-size system based on this area of 750 kilowatts, which is what we've proposed. So in this scenario that you see on the board here, but also in what we've just handed out.
Okay, well, actually, part of my question was actually the wattage of the lighting underneath.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I could double-check that for you, sir. I don't actually know the exact wattage, but they are LED.
We would want it to be as low as possible, obviously.
Sorry?
We would want it to be as low as possible.
Yeah.
As far as neighbors and things like that.
They're going to be...
I mean, now it's summer out there, there's leaves up there, but, I mean, I think you're actually far enough, so...
I would imagine they would be in the same kind of lumens as the current lighting that is on the parking lot, but they would be underneath the array.
How do you address drainage off of these roof structures?
So that's a good question. When you actually look at the structures here, there are gaps in between the solar panels of maybe quarter inch, something like that. So it's really not so much of an impervious structure as it is a pervious structure. But the other way is to say, I do not anticipate, based on conversations with our engineers, that it should create any additional point loads on the utility drainage system at the site. And I can provide an engineer's letter to that effect if you want.
So water's going to come through?
It will come through the gaps, yes. And it basically just kind of drips through.
I think it raises a question for the commission. It's staff's opinion that the, since it's being built on top of already a pavement impervious structure, that while we are very interested in controlling any, and creating any new point sources, then conceptually shouldn't. Because whether it's a solar array that's, you know, spaces in between it, the water's going to fall down on the pavement, it would have fallen down on the pavement anyway.
Well, yes, but it's still going to come down over the aluminum sheets. Yeah, and so it may be more focused. I mean, I know there's spaces between them, but you're still going to possibly get it more to the center part of that.
Do you have available to you a reviewing engineer, should you wish to refer this matter to them, and so you can decide if you wish to do that?
Terms load on the structure, snow, things like that, A, does that, obviously that interferes with the efficacy of the product, but what about, you know, the weight, the load weight of the canopy?
Well, all of the load weights have to be calculated well in advance. One of the reasons that I like working with Solair Generation is that they are one of the top-end product makers in the nation. So when you're talking specifically about snow loads, there are some cases where some carport manufacturers in this last winter, which was particularly harsh, that had some difficulties with their carports. Solair had none of those problems. Part of the way that they design their system, when they actually connect the rebar that comes up out of the foundations, is that rebar is connected all the way down in through the foundations. And these foundations are basically bolted down onto the ground, and then there's a cap on that, there's a cement cap on that. So we're not really worried about any issues in that case. And on top of that, basically, you have to design them within the full tolerances of the potential snow loads. And all of those are based off of 30-year weather tables, so that accounts for work in, when you reference to the efficacy of solar panels, when we estimate the average yield that is produced every year, it's basically based off those 30-year weather tables. There's a weather station right here in New Haven that's part of the national source of weather data.
Are there going to be additional light poles in the parking lot that you add?
No, we shouldn't add any light poles. No, but they will be lighted from underneath, so there will be, you know, sufficient safety lighting.
I'm just curious for the driving and walking areas, if there'd be any other lighting. I see in some of your pictures, there's some poles. It looks like they're light poles that also have solar on them. So I was wondering if you were going to have those as well?
I think I'll just take a look, which one you're referring to.
This one here.
This is, this is a Whole Foods in Brooklyn. We wouldn't be adding any light poles like that. If that's an existing light pole, we wouldn't remove it unless it was causing undue shame to the array. But our goal is to work with the JCC and make sure that the lighting is sufficient for safety and for, you know, general impact on the community.
Is that actually going to be more light?
Well, underneath there will be.
Well, I mean, 15 feet in the air, so it's going to...
I was going to ask, you're going to try to avoid any blasting based on, you know, where you want to place your foot, your footings?
Yeah, I mean, it's our hope that we don't have to do any kind of major rock work, but based on some of the test bits that we've seen in some of the previous drawings, your staff has been very good in terms of providing access to other previous engineering documents that were submitted to the municipality. We do anticipate some rock work, and that is mostly, to my understanding, can be resolved with drilling. So there obviously will be some noise impact due to drilling. There will also be some noise impact when you talk about basically doing some of the excavation to run our trenches over to the point of interconnection, which is a transformer right here, it's a utility transformer just off the main road where the loading dock is. So, you know, there will be some noise impact for sure. I can't pretend that that's not noisy, but it will be within the timeframe that we suggested.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
Just want to, one question. In terms of the 750 kilowatt, so how is that derived? Is that done independent of you? Is that what you were saying?
In terms of the size that we've chosen?
The size, et cetera, and how does that reflect what the energy needs are?
So...
So that's how you get to that?
There are, long story short, there are several size systems that you can request from this special renewable energy program. This was the largest size system that could be built under the bid that was submitted, the successful bid that was won. This accounts for roughly, I think it's, what, 60% of the total generation required for the site. There is all, 50%, roughly 50.
So half of what they need?
Yeah. And so there is also a, basically a combined heat and power system on the site, but, you know, this is, essentially, your limitation in total size is both the ZRECC award that you get, the financial benefit for the green energy produced, but also the size of the total consumption. So you can't ever produce more than 100%. We're well below that, so we don't have that limitation. It's really the, the limitation is the number of green credits awarded that are paid for by utilities.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here this evening to speak in favor of the project? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the project? It's an awesome crowd. All right. The next item on our public hearing is an amendment proposed by the Town Planning and Zoning Commission to zoning regulations for the town of Woodbridge to regulate the location and screening of exterior trash containers on commercial sites, and also the reclassification of Center Road between Racebrook and North Racebrook Roads to a Class B major local road. So this is actually a little more of a public... Let's, so let's focus on just the trash containers for commercial sites. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of the proposed regulations for screening for the trash containers? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition to the proposed regulation for the screening of exterior trash containers? The next item on our, is the reclassification of Center Road between Racebrook and North Racebrook Road to a Class B major local road. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of that? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition to that? We could have Skyped the whole thing. All right, very good. We have...
Are you closing both of those hearings?
Uh, yeah, I, yes, unless, unless somebody has a reason that we shouldn't, but I don't see any reason not to.
Unless you want to have, do we need a consultant for...
For the what? I don't think so. I mean, I completely disagree with what Terry's saying, and I, it's on a private property, and I think that if it's a water problem, the JCC has to deal with it.
But it's an impervious structure, yeah, pervious service and everything, so I have no problem.
I think there's easy solutions if, to be honest with you, there's a problem, so I don't know whether we have to, unless you feel strongly about it.
No, not at all.
Very good.
Absolutely.
So we'll consider both hearings?
Yes. Thank you. So we have appropriate action, receipt and appropriate action on applications, and 824 referrals received since the June 2nd meeting of the commission. I'm not sure which...
Actually, this premise was, I didn't change that.
Yeah. I was thinking we waited a long time, but I know someone else has changed, so it's okay. Okay, so from July 2nd. And, so I'm not sure which one of these things needs a public hearing, if any of them?
The only one that needs a public hearing is the first one.
For the sign?
For the sign.
Okay.
And for the fourth one, the VA VIZO LLC one, that's a request, and your regulations require that there be a notice placed in the newspaper, so that was done.
Okay.
And notice was sent to the about even property owners. I mean, typically, you want to see things in here two weeks in advance, but the statutes allow that things can be submitted. So I did go ahead and do those two things that were required for this meeting.
So we're going to set up Katy Howser 260 Amity Road for a sign, and also VA VIZO...
That doesn't need a hearing.
Which one?
VA VIZO does not. That only needed a notice.
Oh, you just have to send a notice out?
Out in the paper that there's a request for an extension of time, which was done on Friday.
Okay.
Both published.
And is there a time limit on that? In other words, it's sent out?
That permit, which I believe I put in your packet, expires tomorrow.
So, but I mean, once we put a notice in the paper, how long do we give it before us, do people only get one day to see that?
There's, the way the regulations are written, it doesn't say that it has to be published 10 days before, or two weeks in advance, it just says that there has to be a notice.
And it only goes in the paper one day?
And it only goes in the paper once.
Good, good notice.
Is that state statute, or is that us?
That's your regulation.
That's us.
Yeah. Who might want to check on that? Oh, we got rid of that stuff. Okay. So, so we can set up the Katy Howser 260 Amity Road sign for next month? All right, great. The next item is Rachel Fasano, 1768 Litchfield Turnpike. Application for Section 3.1, .2, .2, parentheses 2, in the zoning regulations for a change of use of units, see from office use to a hair and nail salon. Can we just go back one second? I guess we're not allowed to change the rules, but, so, are we not allowed to, like, say, can we send a letter about this extension to the neighbors?
I did.
Oh, to all the neighbors? So you send a letter to the neighbors?
I sent the letter out on Thursday, and then I also published it.
And it also goes in the paper?
And I also published it.
Okay, that's a little better.
A little.
Okay, fine. Well, again, it's better than just having to catch it in the paper once. Okay. Okay, Rachel Fasano.
My name's Rachel.
Could you just sign in there, please?
I did.
Oh, good.
So I do, I'm a hairstylist in Woodbridge. I've been in the town since 2007. Last year, I went out on my own and I opened up Shareballa Salon on Lucy Street. I've been very fortunate that my clientele has doubled, and I am looking to grow and expand, so I'm looking to leave the location where I'm at and move to a new location and grow that way, but the town is limited with the zoning, so I just wanted to ask if you guys could change the zoning to retail for 1768 Litchfield Turnpike? For units sake.
It's a change of use. So they're not changing the zone?
Change of use.
Why don't you change in the zone?
Oh, change is different. Sorry. Relax. Relax. We don't play.
Rachel, what is the size of the space? Do you know offhand how many square feet approximately?
2,100.
2,100. And what is, was it most currently used for?
A yoga studio.
A yoga studio? It wasn't office use.
So why would a yoga studio be considered office use?
I would be setting it as yoga studio. Oh! Office use?
Maybe that was out of the chain. I never thought it would be.
Oh, I'm wondering, yoga studio is office use?
But essentially, the retail, it's the retail use. Where, you know, this has been an office building before. And I think there's a, while I think the parking lot is adequate, I think that the, under our rather esoteric change of use process in our current regulations, you know, we don't have, and I think we, some talked about the fact that our many zoning regulations that our, the communities have, have a zoning use table that is 45 pages long. Ours is three. And so that there doesn't become a lot of things as of right, which is why you get to see a change of use application as often as you do. There's no chart that says, hmm, retail, hair, office building, you know, no problem. So we don't, this is how we get to spend this quality time together.
So in other communities, that have large office parks, they're usually, well, beyond the use tables, there's usually a mixture of the office and/or retail use.
And you've approved this in similar buildings, where we have mixed-use buildings, and quite frankly, they're very successful because they're mixed-use. Yes.
So there's no limitation when they did that office park, to just make it an office use?
When, when this particular property was approved, it was... When this particular property was approved, it was approved solely for office use.
Is there any, so I heard we have a yoga studio there, but I guess are there other commercial or retail uses at that site that staff is aware of at this point?
I don't know. And when 245 Amory Road, for instance, came in, which is a mix of retail and office, that specifically came before you for that mix?
And when this office building was approved, one, you know, the desire was in the community was not, we didn't have a lot of mixed uses. So we've grown up.
Is that built in the 70s, Terry?
I think so.
And they probably just don't ask for office use.
Sure. Sure, you approved what they asked for.
Yeah, even when we've said, why don't you do this? No. We don't want that. Are there any other questions or comments?
Now, we have a letter of approval from the landlord in our package.
We do.
Rachel, how's the hours, 9:00 to 8:00 P.M.? Is that seven days a week or probably no one works seven days a week?
No, I'm hoping for like five days a week, but just like a couple late nights. I wouldn't be like that late every night, just like two to three nights during the weekday.
But we're not going to make that a condition. Okay. We're not putting in hours. Just checking.
You'd be selling retail products, hair products in this store?
Yes, hair products.
My gift certificate.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. The next agenda item is Woodbridge Office Park, OP Inc., NAM's LLC 1 Bradley Road, application per section 3.1, 2.2, 2.22 of the zoning regulations for change of use of units 100 to 906 and the property known as 1 Bradley Road, and solely office use to include retail uses.
I'm Ruth Schaefer. I'm representing the office park, 1 Bradley Road. We recently had tenants come to us who would be classified as retail, but when we went for a permit, we were unable to allow them to use it, so we're finding that our complex would probably be better served with a mixed use. So it's similar to Rachel's that she just went for. We're finding that the office, just office space is no longer the only product that you want to offer if you want to keep your place rented.
So this is... All looks the same, actually. It's a parking lot of the building. So what is the, what is the, maybe Terry, you can answer this, but I'm going to put you on the spot. Parking regs that he has for office versus parking for retail?
I think that it's similar. It's only changes if it gets into a food service.
If it changes to a food, so retail and office is the same except for a food service, like a restaurant?
Correct. I do believe that this particular site, I think that there's adequate parking available.
Yeah. Oh, I know. I mean, I was just kind of curious about how it works because, and so how much, how much square footage? You're not asking for all the property, or you are asking for the whole piece of property?
Any of the spaces that become available. We had somebody who came to us, as I said, but we went for a building permit.
Got it, got it.
But this is the entire property.
So how is that going to fit in as we're going with the PO CD?
Actually, it fits in quite nicely. Are there any questions? What about, is there different signage requirements for office and retail? No, so we don't have to worry about that. Is there anything we have to worry about? Can you think of one negative? Pertained to our regulations, I mean, is there...
I think it's kind of...
I'm not suggesting there is, but I thought I...
I think the main concern would be parking and parking is not a question. I don't believe Terry and I think it is.
Okay. I mean, I agree.
Well, the only negative I could think of is if you had other retail space that was solely designated in commercial ways that wasn't really properly outfitted for office use. And then you would have this taking away from the potential other area of the Village District perhaps, in which you would have just more retail space available, but if you grew it correctly, and I'm just going to take your point of view for a moment, maybe that's where the growth area is and maybe it isn't as much in the office area and maybe it is in more of a retail and commercial space. So if it's properly done, I think one of the biggest things, I've seen a little shelter, okay, and if you go up to, you know, the Sinto area, you've been up there, right? He has large office buildings, very high.
Telete.
And there's limited commercial use, but there is some retail that's around it, but not as much. And so they've limited it. And I guess the real question is, if we're doing it parcel by parcel, you know, this is, how many units do you have in that entire parcel available for rental?
There's probably about 48.
Okay. So if you took the extreme position and said, okay, we're going to have 48 commercial uses and forget about the office, you know, where is that going to drink? You know, it may be because this is a newer park versus some other places that haven't been fixed up. It's more desirable to go there. Not to suggest that that's bad, just to suggest that that's an extreme.
It's...
But I assume to you as a landlord, you'd want to have a mix.
Right, well, I think the mix would be favorable. Right now, we have, you know, all kinds of, we have a lot of doctors, we have attorneys, and we have accountants, and we have some offices for physical therapy, some contractors, the office, so it's a, it's a pretty good mix. And I think this would just add the, to the, to the possibilities that it could be more of a community there and add more services to each that people may be interested in. I don't think it would turn to all, to retail because it's not conducive to that, but I care what you're saying if you have a place down the street that's retail and this turned all re, but I don't think we're really set up for retail. It is mostly for offices.
I think it's called the free market system. I think you should do it.
Whatever, whatever the...
Chairman, your use, table of general use regulations in 3.1, 2, in our second category, wholesale retail stores calls for one space for every 200... Parking spaces, one space for every 200 square feet of gross retail floor area or one space for each two employees for wholesale use. In the next section, item three, professional, financial and commercial offices, one space for every 300 square feet of gross floor area. So offices have a, a more liberal requirement. The requirement is different. The way we've managed this, this issue in mixed-use buildings is that we ask them to demonstrate for each use it's adequate parking and it's just a paper exercise of how many spaces. And most people, most mixed-use establishments find that having adequate parking is good business.
Question for you, when we talk about restaurants, you know, having different parking requirements, is, for example, a Subway sandwich shop considered a restaurant or do you foresee something like that going into your complex? Any type of, you know, retail food establishment?
We've never considered anything like that, but across the street, they have saloon as it's, across the street. Today, I drove around the parking lot, there were about 80 spaces that were available at this point, so parking is, in our complex, is really not an issue.
Right.
Even if we had a Subway or a restaurant or some use that could use a lot of spaces, we actually have quite a few. But I don't see a Subway. I don't, Subway, I think they'd want more...
Not necessarily Subway, but some type of...
Yeah, a restaurant, small sandwich shop.
Sandwich shop or something like that.
We don't, we have never had anybody interest, you know, shown an interest in our park to do something like that. We didn't really set up where Jim's across the street is, you know, he had three or four restaurants in there so far.
Right. It's also defined term in our regulations, right, three types of restaurants. Well, they'd all hear this back and a change for use somewhere down the road if that were to come. So assuming we heard it back, what powers would this commission, in your estimation, have in order to disapprove something that this gentleman wanted to put in? What would be valid reasons for a potential disapproval? Not that I ever want to see that happen. I mean, we want the businesses to be successful.
Restaurant is in, is in retail, is it, Terry?
I don't think it is.
No, so if I had a restaurant, even if you approved this today, I'd have to come back for something like a Subway or something.
And like you said, it's a paper computation on parking, so each time he comes in for a permit or whatever, you're going to calculate whether there's adequate parking.
Right. And the parking is kind of a high-class problem. Now, I will tell you, in 10 years, the next commission may say, how did they let that go through? But it's going to really be more, if suddenly there's not enough parking, it's going to really be more of a problem for the landlord and the businesses because...
Absolutely.
People are just not going to go there because there's no place to park.
They won't want to be there.
Yeah, so they won't want to be there. So it does kind of work itself out without us getting...
In the last 15 years, there should have been areas of our commercial sector where we have had not one parking problem at all, and today we do. And I think that's the very good news. There's, business activity is, is more available and it's a good problem.
Thank you. Any more questions? Is anybody here that would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition to the application? Are you speaking louder? That is true. If we're not speaking loud enough, you need to hold your hand up and we'll just take that as a hint. All right, so we're going to go into work session?
No.
Oh, the extension on the grading. The idea was that we put it in the paper and we send out those.
So a request for an extension, it's not an application and it expires tomorrow? And it's submitted by statutory language, implying for you to have received and...
All right, I misunderstood. All right, is there someone here to speak in, for the VA VIZO LLC application?
For the record, Vincent VIZO, 7 Old Good Hill Road, Oxford, Connecticut. We had no time to get to the job this year.
This is the job where they're coming down the hill?
The hill. We just, we booked a lot of houses up in Harwington. It's only my son, myself, and one other guy.
Maybe you don't want to do this.
I think you voted a no last time, sir.
I'm hoping I get to vote again. I'm just kidding.
I think you should mention things like that, sir.
It was approved. I was a minority member on that decision, so don't worry.
Like I said, we, we just, we've been too busy. We just, this year, just within work for us to do the project. We do kind of have it in our schedule for the spring, when it's growing season, when the job can get done and get seeded right away. Rose and control will be a lot less problematic.
It'll be a lot wetter out there, actually, but...
Yeah, but at least we can grow grass quick and tie the whole project together. It's just that, it just didn't work for us. We actually, we're one of the contractors that are busy. I don't know why, but we have been busy. So, and that's the only reason. But we have not touched the project at all. Haven't done anything to it.
So how long are you asking for an extension for?
Just a one-year extension.
So this is under 7.6 C of your regulations, which says that no operations are permitted after the permit expires. The commission may, however, renew the permit for one additional year without a public hearing provided the applicant submits an upgraded grading plan, which he hasn't submitted because he hasn't done it.
Nothing's changed. It's just the way it was when you approved it the last time.
And a written report by a state licensed land surveyor, a professional engineer certifying that the operation is in compliance, but you don't need that because it's not being acted. I mean, it's not current. The written request for the permit renewal must be submitted to the commission prior to the expiration of the initial permit that was submitted on Thursday. Notice of the application for renewal shall be published as a legal notice in the newspaper having general circulation in the town, and that was done on Friday. Given, given the timeframe it was submitted into staff...
No, this is the same thing. This is the same discussion we had before, same application.
That's why everything turns as quickly as it did. As staff, I didn't want it said that we intentionally or unintentionally did something wrong.
Let it run out. Should have called them.
So that's where you're at.
Or they timely submitted the request.
That's what that meant. All right, questions?
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there anybody to speak in favor of this request for an extension? Is there anybody to speak in opposition to the extension? Thank you. All right, thank you very much. So now we're going to go into the work session. Deja vu going on here. Number one, Woodbridge Gas LLC, 1657 Litchfield Turnpike.
I was not here for the hearings.
We need to get an extension of time from Mr. Garcia. That currently is still before the Inland Wetlands Agency. Their regular meeting is not until the 17th of September, so we will need to get an extension of time from him. Since things automatically get approved, if you have not acted, but however, you haven't received the wet, I'm just talking out loud, you haven't received the wetlands thing, so that you don't, in a sense, need an extension because you have an automatic extension of time if your time runs out to allow for receipt of their comments, so you're still okay.
So does Wetlands not have a timeframe that they're supposed to be getting things in?
Yeah, they receive this at their regular meeting in July, so they're under their 65-day timeframe. So their regular meeting in September is the end of their 65-day timeframe. They've sent it off to their consulting engineer. There's been review back and forth between the two engineers and there should be an amicable resolution to any questions, we believe, by the 17th.
So we'll move that to next month?
We'll just postpone that till your regular meeting in October.
Okay. The next item is Deutsche Go, USA Corporation, 360 Amory Road, application for a modification of a special permit issued to the JCC regarding the intention to construct a solar power canopy structure on the parking lots at the JCC. I mean, I don't know what the deal with the JCC is, but I think it's a great idea.
But we couldn't inquire on that any.
Well, I mean, it's not my problem. It's not my issue, so I, I could ask, but who cares?
Well, you just hope they extend it for sixteen years, that's all.
All right, do you want to vote as we go through here?
I think so.
So is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendments proposed by the Town Planning and Zoning Commission to the zoning regulations for the town of Woodbridge to regulate the location screening of exterior trash containers on a commercial site. That's, should we put this in two votes?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the, that's the first vote. And the wording, am I the only one that has this?
No.
Okay, well, yeah. Three point seven point four, trash containers, all trash containers located on the exterior of a commercial site, so be fully screened from public streets and adjacent properties by an opaque wall or fence.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, discussion, so maybe we've covered this. We're not putting a height on this?
Right.
We are, or we're not?
Screened from public streets.
You have a definition of screening in your regulations as it exists, which is six feet.
Okay, and then we're also not clarifying the size of the trash container that needs? I guess no commercial place is going to have like one trash can.
I have no problems saying old trash cans. Because you're limiting it, yeah, because you're limiting it to commercial, not, and so therefore, it would not cover a residential area, and therefore, I have no problem with that.
Even if we have a mixed use.
Well, that's still commercial.
That's right.
But this regulation is only on new trash receptive.
New applications.
New applications.
Though it would be nice to encourage existing businesses to do the same.
What if they buy a new trash container?
Screen it.
Screen it.
I bet the new trash would be walking around with a camera. Well, I think this is, I mean, this is like, been on the, online for quite a while. A lot of people are going to be quite happy with this, and so I think it's good that we're going. Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Chairman, we need as part of that motion, a statement of finding inconsistency with the proposed regulation with the Town Planning on Conservation and Development, and we also need an effective date.
You go.
Well, can we say today's the effective date?
No, if I have to publish it.
Ten days. You have to publish it, and then, what is it, thirty days or fifteen days?
If you say two weeks from today, that gives me ample time to get everything done.
Two weeks from today. Actually, I would do it instead of two weeks from today, because today's a Tuesday, we'd want it to be effective on Monday rather than.
On the, on the thirteenth?
Yeah, do it on a Monday rather than a Tuesday.
Thirteenth of September is a Saturday.
Whatever the date is, I have no.
Thirteenth of September is a Saturday.
Fifteenth.
Fourteenth.
No, fifteenth is a Monday.
Fifteenth is a Monday.
Okay, whatever.
You're answering why, no? Never mind.
Ask me if I care.
No, you do care.
Oh, okay.
All right, so you're happy with everything?
As long as you're finding it in consistency with the Town Planning on Conservation and Development, sure.
Did you hear me say that?
I did, I guess, okay.
Okay, so do we vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Peggy's voting in lieu of Kathleen.
Okay, and the, the reclassification of Center Road between Racebrook and North Racebrook Roads to a Class B major local road. Intertown Amity Road and Sonya Road Center Road, west from Amity Road, Route sixty-three to the intersection of Center and Racebrook Road, Route one fourteen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Actually, I read the Class A, but there's two other Class B we want to read, which is the Center Road between Racebrook and North Racebrook Road.
Both parts, because you're classifying.
Oh, you're classifying one as.
One. You're limiting what part of Center Road is the Class A, and then you're converting part of Center Road to a Class B. So you need both parts.
But it's already rated a Class A, so we're really, aren't we just saying this part is going to be a Class B?
That was the problem. It said, just said Center Road, and Center Road went all the way up to North Racebrook, so we want to stop at the intersection of Center and Racebrook.
Is there a second? Was this your first?
I made a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Do we, do we have to go through the same thing about the statement?
We do.
As well as an effective date?
Yes.
Insistent on the plan of conservation.
Development and do it on the same date.
Did we vote?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It's like getting sworn into.
Katie has her, that shouldn't be in our work session.
No, it's out.
Rachel Fasson, seventeen sixty-eight Litchfield Turnpike, application of section three point one, point two, point two-two, zoning regulations for a change of use from unit C from office use to a hair and nail salon. Discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Good luck.
Yes. Yes. Buddy will be in next week.
No limitation on the hours.
Exactly. Okay, Woodbridge Office Park, OP Inc., NAMs LLC, One Bradley Road, application per section three point one, point two, point two-two, zoning regulations for a change of units, use of units from one hundred to nine oh six, and the property known as One Bradley Road, from solely office use to include retail uses. Motion to approve.
A second.
All those.
So before you go into that, I just think this comment ought to be made, that since we have our consultant here, and we're going through this plan of conservation and development, and we've had this discussion before, that that be properly, you know, in a looking-forward way, be incorporated as we go forward. Because I think this is opening up that maybe appropriate can of worms, but it is, in fact, opening it up, and I don't know that, you know, we have to take a look at how that may affect things going forward. It doesn't appear that it's going to be negatively affecting, but I think our job as, as a board is to make sure. So much for my comment.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, VA VIZO LLC, one ten, one fourteen, Luciani Street, request for an extension of earth excavation for residential site construction at one ten, one fourteen, Luciani Street.
I'll move the approval for the one-year extension.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?